Director Beriantos.
Yeah.
Director Blaser.
Here.
Director Briggs.
Here.
Director Fitzgerald. Director Jantsch. Director Schilling.
Here.
Director Shane.
Here.
Director Spivey.
Here.
Director Verden.
Here.
Seven ninety-one Main Street Development Analysis.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I'll invite Charlie Mitchell, our Economic and Community Director, to come up and introduce the topic.
Thanks, Brian, members of the agency. I'll keep my comments brief because I want to give you as much time as possible with our consultant, but our consultant, Brian Veneman with Forum Placemaking, is here tonight to take you deep into the weeds on this project so that you'll have some data and you can make it some informed decisions later on how we take the next steps on this project. So I'll hand it over to Brian.
Good evening. Thanks for being here and for having me. As Charlie said, I'm Brian Veneman. I'm with Forum Placemaking. I have other members of this consultant team are shown on the slide there. And I would agree with Charlie that I'm going to go pretty deep into the weeds. So pull me back out of the weeds if you want. So I am going to go over some aspects of this project. I've been working with Charlie since summer of 2024, so go over some of that, and then talk about developer request for qualifications or request for proposals process. In other words, how the city could reach out to developers in the coming months to solicit interest in the project. I'll talk about an impact analysis, including taxes and fees to be received by the city based on development of the project, potential development incentives, and then discussion with you all. So some of the key questions you'll see from this slide and some of the other slides, I reworked some of the material just a little bit from the copy that you have, just trying to clean it up and clarify. But the key questions I have for you tonight is should the city move forward with a developer request for qualifications to be released in spring of 2025, so next couple of months? And to clarify, that's part of my scope to work with the city on a marketing the site to developers. We've certainly already done some of that, but, you know, not in a formal way. And which of the development options that I'll show you are the best, are preferred, which are acceptable, which are unacceptable, if any? Do we get the vision right? I'll show you the vision that we've developed with the community and with you over the last six-plus months, and what developments as incentives are appropriate, if any. Okay, so the project review, I'm going to show a bunch of slides here. We did a survey in August and September of 2024. We had one hundred and eighty-four responses online. We did a, we did an open house, but the data that I'm showing you here is from the online responses. So one of the, we asked a lot of questions is a lot of great information. I'm just going to show you a few of the takeaways. One was we asked people, what do you want to see on the upper floors here? The top response was lodging or hotel. That was about, about two to one of hotel versus house and not quite. But and then others scored high, but it was kind of all over the map. So it's hard to really say what other means. But so lodging was the top choice. So, okay, so, so what this shows is our question of which of the preliminary design concepts that are four that are shown on the bottom of the slide best matches what you'd like to see at the site. So people were only allowed to choose one of the options. And so the four-story hotel, what we called Option 1A, what I'm recommending or putting forward is that the city might call that the preferred option for the site. And that is the one that the most respondents said they preferred. So that's sixty-four out of one hundred eighty-ish respondents. And I'm suggesting we might say to, to the development community and for you, that those other, the other four options, so there was a four-story hotel, a five-story hotel, four-story housing, sorry, and five-story housing, Tubi is incorrectly labeled, would be acceptable. All of the options, we're assuming have ground floor commercial space. You can see that in the red spaces on the ground floor. They all have a upper story, top story roof deck. You can see, you can see, in our other submittals, you can see a lot of details with the site plan and massings. It's hard to, let me see if I have a cursor here, but you can see, for example, the details around a ground floor restaurant or commercial space on the corner, another commercial space here, and lobby spaces, and then the upper floor roof deck here.
Before you, before you leave that slide.
Yes, you bet, yeah.
In the center there, near the top, those two, those two little floor plans that we see.
Yeah.
In the, the upper one of the two at the extreme right, that colored area, the print on my copy is too tiny to read. What's that say?
It says, it probably says roof deck. I mean, that's what it's intended. So this is the top floor here, and that would reflect this.
Okay.
Open space.
Yeah, I just couldn't read it because it was too tiny. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. So again, this, this was preferred by the, by the respondents to the, the survey, online survey, but, you know, we may have, the Urban Rural Board may have a different take on this. We also, after the online survey, we talked about some other different alternatives. One of them that was recommended by the ERDAC, the Urban Rural Advisory Committee, was to look at actually increasing, showing more capacity on the site by showing an L-shaped. So the other designs I showed you were kind of a bar-shaped hotel or housing where you just have one long building here on the south side of the site. The ERDAC recommended that we look at a L-shaped building. So that's one where the upper floors would extend over surface parking on the back like this. And with that, you could actually get more hotel rooms or housing units, up to eighty-seven is what we're, we're showing. And so, and then we also have talked about other options, and in fact, the Polk CDC, I've been in touch with them. They are interested in the site. Their vision of the site is to do ground floor commercial space. You can see here, second floor would be lodging or short-term rental, and then the upper floors be housing. What I'm indicating here is that I'm interested in your feedback on whether these options that weren't in the survey are acceptable as well. I'm going to try to go through the whole presentation, and then we'll come back to try to answer the questions at the end. But so, just to show you some other takeaways from the survey, and I realize this is really small, we asked people about, I think, ten different aspects of how, kind of, components of site development and what people liked the most. We said, you know, do you want to see this in the site, or it's, is it, is it ideal but not necessary? What people liked the best was ground floor retail or commercial space on the left, a rooftop deck, people loved that, and then widening the sidewalk on Mill Street. Those were the three most popular site design features. We asked about other things, but those were the most popular. We also asked which of the, these five buildings people thought were compatible with the surrounding historic districts. Seven ninety-one Main Street is not in the historic district, but it's adjacent to it. So compatible, having a compatible building was seen as important. And people, the, the option that people liked the best was the Atticus Hotel in downtown McMinnville. And then, you know, there were varying opinions about these other buildings. Part of the reason I'm showing you this is that I, my proposal would be that we also share a lot of this information with developers to help, you know, guide and inform their thinking about what the city wants, so that they can come back with the, hopefully, proposals that best fit that vision. So last thing about the, kind of, the survey and the background is, is a vision statement. We showed community members, and we also showed you, you all this before, is this six-bullet vision statement. The change here is that we also asked community members to tell us which of these six bullets they agreed with the most. Actually, and the first I would say is that this is the thing that we got the most support on. Eighty-three percent of people who took the survey said that they either agreed or strongly agreed with this vision, which I was thrilled by, I think. And the statement that people were most supportive is the first one that's in bold, which was just that the, the future development on the site, whatever it is, should attract more people and activity downtown and revitalize downtown Dallas. So it was kind of a general downtown revitalization statement. Whereas the other statements were also popular, be a place for locals and visitors, be a multi-story mixed-use building, be timeless and high quality, be an economic asset, and serve as a gateway into downtown. Those were all received in descending order support from community members.
Saying these bullets are listed in descending order of popularity?
The other reason I, I find this is really important is this is another thing I, I find is really useful to show to developers. They can either decide that they can't deliver on this, or they can say, I, you know, I like this, I support it, I understand it, I want to buy into this vision, or figure out how to work with the city to achieve it. So, but this, but we also look for your, either approval of this vision or modifications to it at the end. So I also presented in November, I believe, more extended market analysis. For both the hotel and housing, my view and the view of my other team members is that we kind of had this odometer graphic that both the hotel and the housing are going to be challenging. And I'll talk more about why I believe that is, but also possible. And here I list, we list strengths for the feasibility, the financial feasibility of the hotel, and, and strengths and challenges of the, of the feasibility of the hotel and housing. I, I'm going to, I'm going to skip that, but I'll talk a little bit more about, about why, why we believe that's so, and a few other slides. So I'm going to talk about my recommendations for the developer outreach process. My recommendation, and those, the other team members, is that the city use a two-step request for qualifications, then a request for proposals process for the property, and publish a RFQ in the spring of 2025, so possibly in March or April. And that we basically share all, everything I showed you previously in the previous slides about the survey results, show Option 1A as the preferred option, so that's a four-story hotel, but also say that other options are acceptable. Now, if they're not acceptable, you just tell me and we'll delete those. Because we do want to be, try to reflect the city's intentions best possible, yeah.
How did you come up with the three options, three being hotel, housing, and offices? Who came up with those options, and how did you come up with them?
That's a great question. The, this, so first, the city had done its own thinking about the site in 2023. Those were some of the, the options, the main options that the city had talked about at that point. But when I think about a downtown building, and a downtown building that's built by private sector developers and generates property tax, for example, those are the main, main ones I think of anyway. Those, you know, if you think of the real estate product types, you know, the housing, lodging, office space or employment space, we have always assumed there's commercial on the ground floor. Are there other options that you think we should, we should consider?
Any thoughts about thinking out of the box, like sports complex for youth, indoor pickleball complex, new civic center, or new convention center that would bring conventions or businesses or stuff like that?
So those are, those are certainly options we haven't, I haven't thought of very much.
I can tell you that our youth right now, we have fabulous youth that have potential in sports.
Yeah.
They're going to put Dallas on the map. We have world-class wrestlers. We have track and field superstars at age fourteen, thirteen. We have fabulous football team is really showing potential. The girls' softball team is showing a lot of potential. And we just need someplace, our wrestling team has always shown a lot of potential, but they don't have the facilities to actually practice.
So I, I think that's a really important question. So if it's okay with you, why don't we, why don't I put that here, and then let's come back to it so that I, so I get through the rest of it.
Weren't there, weren't there lots of discussion about, you know, a park and a water fountain and sports events, sports venues, where it really penciled out that it was not, it didn't fit for us to take a multimillion-dollar piece of property and...
CBD.
Yeah. I mean, not that that's not a bad idea, but it's, it's a piece of property we're looking to generate revenue, generate taxpayers.
Yeah, if I can answer that question a little bit. I appreciate your, your thoughts on that, Councilor Beriantos, and I think that one of the, the main drivers of this entire project, right, is, is taking a property that, you know, wasn't generating its potential in terms of, you know, development activity, tax revenue. The Urban Rural Agency purchased that property with the, the property tax revenue that we collected with the intent of putting something back there, redeveloping that property with something that generates more tax revenue than what was there before. So, you know, some of those items that you've identified would be tax-generating projects, others would not. So anything on that list that's not tax-generating, like a civic center space, you know, Councilor Briggs talked about a park or some other amenities that way, those would not generate the tax revenue needed. We'd actually be losing tax revenue versus what we had with a vacant, you know, commercial building. And so we need to make sure that whatever projects we do come up with is going to generate the tax revenue, not only to replace what was there, but, you know, exceed what we had previously, right? Because we, we purchased that property, you know, and with tax dollars, and we want to be able to recover that, plus, you know, have it be something that is, you know, you know, attractive, brings vitality to downtown, you know, and brings that tax revenue component in. So I think that, you know, to pile on to what our consultant here is saying is that, you know, the office space, you know, ground floor, commercial, you know, lodging and residential are the, kind of, the three key pillars that would achieve that objective of bringing that tax revenue to that, that project.
Certainly. You don't take in mind the civic conventional center. Usually, when you have a convention, you have people from the outside coming in, selling things, and doing our presentation. And the, the added attraction to having a hotel would be really nice, too, to have in a convention center.
I think a convention center is something that, you know, could be tax-generating, depending on the ownership of that. But like a civic center space would not be, right? So, yeah, so some of the things on your list certainly could fit the mold and something for us to think about, but others, you know, don't, yeah.
Just thinking out loud, my, my big hesitation about convention space would be, how many days a year are you going to keep it full?
How's a hotel working right now that we have in town?
Yeah, you're right, and it's the same issue both ways, yeah.
I've got a question back to the RFP, RFQ process. In the world I live in, RFQ is a quote, request for quote, and an RFQ is a proposal. So quotes are typically based on low bid. How does that process work the way you've got it laid out?
So in my world, it's not a request for quote, it's a request for qualifications. So I'll show you, yeah. So, so, so this is, I'm showing here, and to back up a little, I mean, you know, I've been lucky to work with numerous communities and cities and ports on processes like this. And so in a RFQ or a request for qualifications process, what we're really doing is trying to figure out, hear from teams and figure out who's the best qualified team to do this. And what we typically ask for is shown here, a vision, a short vision from the development team, who's, who are the leaders of that, that firm and team, resumes, comparable projects, references. We do also ask for their, their thoughts about a deal structure and incentives required. We want to understand, do they want to buy the property, they want to lease the property, what incentives they need? Because you don't want to start entering into negotiation with somebody that, whose financial expectations are not in line with yours. But what, what we, as opposed to a request for proposals, I'm showing here, usually with a request for proposals, we'd ask for all those things I just talked about, but also kind of site-specific proposals, in other words, development, drawings of the site, renderings of the site, specific number of hotel rooms, site plans, and a pro forma financial analysis. I'm recommending the city start with this, because for developers to do all this stuff is very time-consuming, and basically, it can deter the most experienced developers who are busy and don't want to go through all this. So what, what, it depends on the site, but what I'm recommending is we first do a two, two-step where we get, you know, try to understand who the most qualified developers are out there, select, shortlist three, and then ask, ask those three ideally for specific proposals for the site.
Given your odometer, which shows that we're, if we go the direction we're all leaning, generally leaning, we're at the high-risk end of the scale, I think we definitely want to start with a team that we feel good about going in before we go any further. I know, I like that idea.
So the, the, the copy that, that was sent to you in advance had a more detailed schedule, but, you know, I don't think tonight perhaps is to get, is the time to get into a detailed schedule. But basically, in the spring, release a request for qualifications, be marketing the site at that time, receive submittals, shortlist a team, and then in the, in the summer, you know, be paring down that shortlist to a preferred developer, negotiate the deal in the rest of the year. So that's a, that I think is a reasonable schedule, a possible schedule.
Only going to get one shot at this. We've got to get it right the first time.
Certainly ideal.
I have a question about the lower, well, I, I think, I, I would envision four floors, but maybe the first floor being easily accessible to the public and retail space, a restaurant, maybe, and then the second floor being similar to like the little stores they have in downtown Salem, where it's like in, it's right by the Elsinore, I don't know what it's called, but it's smaller stores, like on this, like a little shopping place with more of a...
Like the Reed Opera House kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. The problem is, and then having lodging above that, and the rooftop thing would be it for sure. Keeping a hotel busy like now, why would anyone, none of our shops, the only thing open at night are bars and the gyms. I mean, until we have a downtown set of businesses that have anything to offer in the evenings, I don't see that it would be full a lot of the year.
It's a real chicken versus egg. I mean, it's a classic chicken versus egg. You want to revitalize your downtown, you want things to generate foot traffic, but you have to have things that they're going to want, like a place to stay, but in order to fill the rooms, you have to have things from, I mean, it's a real chicken/egg thing. And, and it's a high-risk thing, but, you know, you either dive into it or you don't.
Counselor, you know, I, I came into this project thinking, really reflecting what you just said about the, the challenges of hotel development. One of the members of my team is a fellow named Eric Eby, who's been involved in the lodging hospitality business for forty, fifty years. And what we've really looked at together is that the Willamette Valley is experiencing global interest from hotel developers. I mean, it's pretty remarkable. And you have communities like Dayton now, certainly Dundee, Dayton, McMinnville, Salem, Independence, in their, in their own ways, that where, but, but I'll just take Dayton. You know, there's a major hotel group that is planning a hotel there. You know, if you go down to downtown Dayton, I, I don't find it has anything that downtown Dallas doesn't. I mean, we could, we could debate that, but, but they're planning a very high-end hotel where they expect people to pay well over three hundred dollars a night. And so, kind of reflecting that we're in a space where, while I agree with how you characterize downtown Dallas in general, that this wine tourism and international, national, international tourism is making people, hoteliers, take bets on hotels that we might think they wouldn't otherwise do. But also, I'll talk about some other variables too, but that, that's, that's one thing.
They also have a lot of traveling professionals. I mean, I know four traveling nurses that spend four months here.
Yeah.
Go to Minneapolis, spend four months. They do this all year long. So there's traveling professionals that can afford something like that. But like regular housing, there's no way. They wouldn't be able to afford the rent.
Have you seen hotels that have one particular floor that's just rental as far as renting space for retreats, or, you know, like a convention, like a, not a big convention, but companies that get together, that do training and stuff like that?
Not necessarily one floor, but most hotels, like I'm thinking of the Independence or the Atticus specifically, or the Dallas, and I mean, these are all different, but they've all got... they've all got.
Meeting rooms.
Yeah, they've all got conference space. It's, you know, I'm going to, let's say 3,000 to 10,000 square feet, maybe it's more than that. But yeah, there's lots of meeting rooms. Yeah, yeah. They all, I would say they all have that, with the exception of the Best Western here in Dallas. Okay, so I'm going to talk about what I think of as impact analysis and also financial analysis of the two development options. So, first of all, this graphic here shows an analysis that was completed of Eugene, and you can see downtown Eugene in the kind of center of the map, and it's showing the property tax value per acre. The reason I show this is just that when things go right, and there can be a dense downtown development, you can put a lot of, you can put a lot of stuff on a single acre, a lot of property tax value, and a lot of other, can kick off a lot of other tax and fees for the city that I'll talk about. And so, our projections are that assuming we had, and the numbers I show here, actually, I should say, are for the five-story option. So, conceivably, they should be pulled back a little to reflect the four-story option. But we're showing 150 to $210,000 of annual revenue to the Urban Renewal Area and City General Fund, once operating normally. A considerable amount of spending, because you'd have, that's by residents or visitors who are coming to the hotel or the housing, so they're spending money in Dallas. Jobs during operation, 20 to 30 jobs during, sorry, 20, 30 jobs during operation, the ground floor commercial, and the floors above, given that you now have people working from home. But most of all, I think these projects respond to that idea of attracting people and activity to downtown. So, that all sounds great. I'm going to, but I'm going to talk more about why this, some of the reasons why this project is challenged financially. So, some of the reasons are that, you know, just on the housing side, what we're seeing a lot being proposed in Dallas is three-story wood frame walk-up apartments, among other things, single-family homes are also being proposed here. But when we move to this, and it's a little hard to see, when we move to this different style of development, which is a four or five-story project that's mixed use, there's actually, it costs more for a number of reasons. Many of those are listed down here. The structure is different, you need a concrete ground floor. Typically, you need structural elements like a post-tension slab, you have elevators and enclosed hallways that are leasable. You almost certainly have additional foundation work because of the environmental conditions on this site. So, my point here is, part of the reason I see this project as difficult financially for developers, and because the reason the odometer is turned to the right side, is this project is more expensive than three-story, you know, garden apartments.
Again, before you leave that slide, on the right side, the more expensive are, what's that last line mean? Could you just explain a little bit more?
Yeah, costly mobilization. So, mobilization is getting all your trucks and equipment and materials and labor to the site. If you've got a big greenfield site, you lay it down anywhere. If you've got a small site, where do you park everything? And you've got to close streets sometimes, and it's just more difficult. So, this shows our projection of tax and fee revenues for the Urban Renewal Area and the city of Dallas. And so, again, this is showing the five-story options. The first lines, so this project will generate revenues for a number of different funds operated by the city of Dallas, or the Urban Renewal Agency. The first one is the Urban Renewal Agency, and the Urban Renewal Agency collects property tax. So, this is kind of for a stabilized year, so probably not the first year, but we're projecting that property tax for this project to generate $150,000 if a hotel, and $139,000 if a housing project per year. And so, there's another column here that shows if the project is tax-abated. I'll talk about that a little more, but the city has the option to abate, partially tax-abate the project for some period of time. The second row is lodging tax. Obviously, there's no lodging tax that is generated by a housing project. But for, and there's two components of the lodging tax. The first 30% goes to the general fund, and we're projecting a little under $50,000 a year would go to the general fund. There's also franchise fees, which are taxes and fees on utility service, which we project to be about $10,000 for whatever the project. And so, this shows a total of, you know, 150 to $210,000.
It should be noted just in passing that that TLT number could theoretically change depending on what the legislature does this year, because there is, there is some pressure to change the way that law works, coming from League of Cities and other places. So, that number could change, but we just certainly can't count on it. Can't plan on that happening, but it's a real possibility.
Is the state considering taking more of the tax?
No, the, quick soundbite, no, the municipalities are, many of them, including us, are unhappy with the way the 70-30 split works. Because if you're Cannon Beach or places like that, yeah, you need that 70%, because you get bombarded every year with visitors. If you're a place like Dallas, it's kind of hard to figure out how to spend all that money on attracting visitors from more than 50 miles away, which is what the state statute requires you to use the money for. So, the municipality is trying to get that eased a bit. Whether they'll succeed or not, your guess is good as anybody's, but it could happen.
Got it. So, that takes us to some of the other taxes and fees that the project would spin off. There's systems development charges and to some degree permitting fees. It's difficult to project the systems development charges for a hotel, for reasons I could talk about. But my, for the housing, it's easier. My guess, and I guess I should test this further, is that the SDCs for the hotel would be comparable to a housing project. And for the housing, we're projecting about 1.3 million. That's a one-time systems development charge received by the city, rather than, you know, in every year, annual. There's also then the lodging tax component. That's the second portion, which is 70% of lodging tax, which would generate a little over $100,000 a year. That goes to supporting tourism, as the counselor mentioned. So, that could also be used by the city, so long as it supports pulling people in. And then there's water, sewer, stormwater, public safety fees, and state shared revenues, which we've not estimated. I think it'll become clear why I think this is important. Obviously, this can generate revenues that the city can use in a variety of ways, and that's part of the goal of the project, to kick off property tax revenue.
That's one of the basic goals of Urban Renewal.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, let me go, let me try to, however, to talk about some of the reasons I think the, thinking about the fiscal impact is so important. And this goes to the hotel financial analysis. So, what I'm showing here is the project cost in blue, and then the project value and a funding gap. So, we kind of started with assumption of 60% occupancy and $190 of average room rate, which, based on our assessment of other hotels, is reasonable and average for the kind of set of comparable hotels that we think this would compete with. And under that scenario, we still think there's a funding gap for this, it's a pretty significant funding gap. We also think that funding gap could be even more significant if occupancy is, you know, significantly below the average. But we also think that as the city contemplates potential incentives, development incentives, that that gap can be closed. Here, we're showing what I call a land value write-down. In other words, selling the land for $0 or less than the $385,000 that the city paid for it. And also, if the developer was a kind of patient capital or was a local investor, this would be similar to in Dayton, Bill Stoller, the Stoller family is investing in that hotel. So, let me go back to the housing, and this is pretty deep stuff. But what this analysis shows is our attempt to look at how does financial feasibility and how's this red gap get closed if we apply different incentives? And those are shown, those types of incentives we could apply to this project are shown here on the left. Possibly a land value write-down, possibly tax abatement, partial tax abatement, which I could talk about more, possible SDC, different approaches to SDCs, including waiving SDCs or deferring SDCs, and having a, eliminating ground floor retail, which I don't think is desired at all, but we did that for the purposes of testing the feasibility. And then having a patient investor, which we've seen some of the hotels in the, in the Willamette Valley have a local patient, high net worth family that have invested in them, which would be great, and if you know them, I think that could be an incredible asset for this. And essentially, what we find from looking at this is that as you apply the, some of these incentives, the gap can be reduced going across, and you can see the incentive. So, for example, this alternative assumes that there's a land value write-down and tax abatement, and the gap gets closed slightly. So, this is kind of the more quantitative version of the odometer graphic, where I'm saying that the, that the finances are challenged for the project. And it's for that reason that, that, I'll talk more about the incentives, but I think that the city would be well-served to at least put some potential incentives on the table for developers. So, if we kind of get to the one that's on the far right, here we have a 63-room, sorry, housing project. We're using rents, apartment rents that are, have been achieved by recent projects in Monmouth and Independence. We have a land value write-down that's assumed. The property is subject to the tax abatement, which is VHDZ, Vertical Housing Development Zone. There's a partial systems development charge waiver, and we have a patient and local investor, essentially. And there, we get the gap down to, it's still a significant gap, but $1.6 million. So, this is a, this is an imperfect analysis. I mean, we, in my experience, I find that some developers will see a zero gap on this type of project, and others will see, still see a big gap despite the incentives. But it's really trying to test the impact of different incentives. So, I'm going to, so, just to list some of the key incentives that I think could be considered by the city are the following. Land value write-downs, essentially that means selling the property for somewhat less than the $385,000 that was paid all-in for the property. The URA is, that's being financed, that purchase price is being financed, and the URA needs to pay the city, beginning in 2026, about $40,000 per year for 10 years. There also are, there's a range of potential approaches to systems development charges that could serve as incentives to developers. And those are listed here. So, developers, rather than paying at permitting, SDCs could be deferred until certificate of occupancy or the building's completed. They could be financed, SDCs could be financed over five years or some extended period. One approach that I've seen for certain projects is because we anticipate the developer to build a plaza as part of this project that's adjacent to the mural, that's on the building to the north, the city could essentially waive park systems development charges in exchange for that investment in the plaza. And then at the extreme end, and I frankly don't think this is really on the table for the URA, but I'm listing it here, is that I've seen some projects where the Urban Renewal Agency waives, pays the systems development charges. That would be a significant and probably impossible thing for the Urban Renewal Agency to do, as those systems development charges are, will cost in excess of $1 million. There also are two tax abatement program, or there's two tax abatement programs that I want to talk with you about. One is the enterprise zone, which already exists in downtown Dallas. It's for hotels or other businesses that generate certain levels of employment. So, a hotel here almost certainly would qualify for a three-year tax abatement, I believe without any action by the city or the Urban Renewal Agency, by virtue of the number of jobs it would create. However, there's also, an enterprise zone can, can offer a five-year, a five-year tax abatement. And because the enterprise zone was a creation of three cities in Polk County, Dallas, Independence, and Monmouth, all three of those cities would need to approve the extension or the five-year enterprise zone tax abatement.
Is that true only in the five years?
Yes. I also do want to say, so, is that all of these tax abatement programs are partial tax abatements. So, the developer, the owner continues to pay property taxes on the land, but not the, it's a little complicated, but not the improvements. So, they're partial tax abatements. There's also, the state authorizes cities to establish multiple different tax abatement programs for housing. The most common one is called the vertical housing tax, Vertical Housing Development Zone. It's a 10-year tax abatement. It typically abates 60 to 80% of the taxes on the structure, depending on variables. It doesn't exist in Dallas. It exists in dozens of cities around the state. It would need to be established by the city in order to, you know, be in effect here. Also, the state, I believe, is looking at renewing or not renewing that Vertical Housing Development Zone program in 2026. And so, I don't think that would be a problem, well, not necessarily, but if the city didn't initiate it by 2026, then you might not have a chance to do so. So, here is one type of project. I do want to let you know that, you know, these types of incentives have been utilized by other cities for other projects, such as the Fourth and Main Project in downtown Hillsborough and many others, where essentially everything I've talked about was employed. This is a nice project, and it's next to, it's a mixed-use project next to a performing arts space in downtown Hillsborough. And these other projects utilized a mix of different public incentives. So, one of the developers I spoke to, a hotel developer, also stated that it's possible there would be some there would be some capacity for essentially the developer to make additional investments in the site, and then to be credited back some of the transient lodging tax. I don't know if that, I'm not aware of other projects that have done that, that came from a developer. So I did want to put it on there as something that was raised. That's why I put a potential incentives. So I did say I was going to go deep into the weeds. Hopefully, I've made good on that promise. But my recommendation for the request for qualifications or for other marketing that the city does is that the city doesn't commit to specific incentives, but rather to kind of put those on the table so that you can receive essentially proposals from developers and understand under what, you know, are these things that they absolutely must have or optional? And, you know, kind of weigh both their deal structure proposals and their physical proposals to the site, along with incentives that they're seeking. And it becomes part of a negotiation. But what I'm recommending is that we include some language, such as, "The city will consider innovative approaches in supporting the project, including via land write-down, limited-term tax abatement, systems development charge approaches, including SDC deferrals and potentially innovative uses of transient lodging tax." And you're only going to consider those approaches for proposals that meet the city's vision. I guess I just want to say, I do this work with a lot of cities. I enjoy working on these public-private partnerships. But, you know, development incentives are, they're just controversial by nature. I think that they can make sense in situations where the city is trying to do something that just has financial challenges, as I think this project, you know, will present to many developers, although not all. So that's why I think, that's why I think the city should consider these incentives that I talked about. But I certainly understand if you decide it's not appropriate. Okay, so I'm going to, I have four more slides, I think, and I'm just going to rush through these, and then we'll talk about the questions I introduced at the beginning. So a couple other things. We learned, as in talking with the city's planning staff, that actually part of the downtown code for essentially five-story buildings, or buildings that are, I'm going to get the feet wrong, so I won't quote it, essentially five-story buildings, a setback is required, an eight-foot setback is required on the long face of the building. So in other words, if we literally interpreted the zoning, we actually would need to set back the top floor here. But some discretion is allowed, so this roof deck might satisfy that need of the zoning.
Let me stop you for a moment, because I want to direct a question to you. Could we deal with this stuff by variance, or do we have to change the code?
No, you can address the step-back issue by variance. We had a recent project go through the planning commission where they requested a variance to the step-back requirement, and that was met with an approval.
Thank you. Yeah. One of the reasons I bring this up is that, you know, we want to be as clear as possible with developers and, you know, have as few roadblocks or surprises. So, you know, I just wanted to reflect what our understanding of the code was, and that this might be something that would come up. But, yeah. I would also say, most of the projects that I deal with that are like this, there's a disposition and development agreement that's involved, where, you know, the city is selling the property to a developer under certain terms and conditions. And through that process, and I certainly, the city attorney could weigh in on this, but certain aspects of the zoning can be modified, has been my experience. So another thing that is worth at least thinking about a little bit is that one of the things that was very popular with people was widening the sidewalk. That was something the city has always assumed would be done on this site. And we initially assumed that the way we'd do that is have the developer extend the sidewalk to the south by, I think, three, maybe more feet. That would, however, that would probably require, you know, obviously moving the curb, possibly moving the location of the trees, although maybe not. And so what might be less expensive for the developer and achieve the same outcome would be just setting the building back north of the property line by three feet.
Extend the sidewalk southward, then we lose some parking.
Two more slides here. Another thing that I talked about last time was that, and to the counselor's point, was that the more we can create a really vibrant, interesting environment here with a lot of ground-floor tenants, whether for residents or for hotel visitors, the better. And so there are, we know that on these buildings, almost immediately to the south, the two building owners, along with the downtown Dallas Association and the city, will be seeking pretty significant Oregon Main Street revitalization grants that could be up to $400,000 for each of these buildings, although I understand it's a little less, to do renovations on the ground floor of the Dallas Antique Mall, and I believe the upper floors of the Blue Garden. And I just think this is an exciting opportunity to kind of market this thing that's happening along with the site. And if possible, one of the other questions that we asked people on the survey is, what ground-floor tenants would you like to see in downtown, you know, kind of irrespective of the 791 site? And some of the things people were most interested in were restaurants, a bookstore, or a vendor mall. I think that was kind of like the Reed Opera House concept, where you have multiple small tenants. So we foresee any way to kind of collaboratively create a destination here at this intersection would be positive. And then, lastly, one of the things that I saw in the survey was, kind of to your point, one of the things that people talked about a lot is, we'd love to have places for families, kids, teens, outdoor spaces in downtown, activities for kids and teens. And I believe one of the potential places where that could be, where there's an opportunity to realize that more is actually on the Courthouse Square. The Courthouse Square is lovely. They've done nice upgrades to it. It's really well-maintained. At the same time, over the summer, after going to Dallas, I went to downtown Monmouth. And I was really struck by, you know, the water features they have there, the shade, the picnic tables, and that's common for downtown squares. I think that more, some of those things could happen at this square. And I think, just kind of putting on my hat as trying to think of what kind of either tourism or residential experience would be wonderful for residents of this 791 Main Street, I think improving or bringing more daily life to this square could be really positive for that site in downtown. Okay, so that takes us to the questions. Should the city move, and these are slightly different from the ones in your packet, apologies, but I did want to refine them. Should the city move forward with the developer RFQ to be released in the spring? Should the RFQ showed the options identified in this presentation, I'm sorry, as, this should say, preferred, 1A would be preferred, that's the four-story hotel, and acceptable options, all the other ones? And should the vision I showed be included in the RFQ, should be modified in any ways? And then, should the RFQ include the language stating above about incentives? So without, thank you for letting me talk for however long it was.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I have a silly one, but as far as ground floor retail.
Yes.
Is it possible that that could include a roller skating rink?
This site seems probably small for that.
Small town. We don't all have to go once.
It's possible. So I'd say a few things about it. If you think of the ground floor that we've designed of this building so far, there are some things that you kind of have to have. If you have a hotel or your housing above, you need a lobby. You need some kind of back-of-house areas where often you have a community room or a fitness room. Anyway, those things detract, they take away from the overall space that would be available for a roller rink. Let me think about that. Just so you know, the site is about 190 feet long, and then the buildings we've shown are about 60 feet, 60, 65 feet north-south. My instinct is that that is probably too small for at least the...
What if you moved the restaurant to the second floor? And the lobby for the hotel to the second floor? You have two floors of rooms.
Yeah.
I mean, if you had most of the building on the ground floor taken up by a roller skating rink, and then you had outdoor tables, and it's a nice place to sit when you're out there, and there's nowhere to sit during crazy days, or it's covered, and you have somewhere in the shade to sit or out of the rain, then you could have the bottom floor be that, and the second floor be a restaurant on one side, that's a nice restaurant, a lobby, and whatever else on the second, and then have two or three floors of lodging.
So if I put on my spreadsheet hat, my developer spreadsheet, I think that that is possible. I think that if you want to do something like that, it might be the case where the city would need to kind of essentially own and operate something like a roller skating rink, simply because developers, if you look at that, are basically going to say, it's going to cost $300 to $400 a square foot. And if you look at the revenue, it probably won't cover the cost. That's my instinct on it. And therefore, when we work in projects where there's a diseconomic use, I showed Hills, then in that case, you know, what can be done is, the city would actually just pay for the ground floor, essentially. And what can happen is, a developer can build the whole building, condominiumize it, so there's the ground floor condominium, upper floor condominium, and then deed it back to the city. But, yeah.
But you're looking at like $5, $6 million.
On that order.
And maintaining it. You know, you could put it in, they ask, you know, we're looking for something where we can have some community involvement, you know, there might be some ideas out there that somebody could come up with a wild carousel thing, or some ideas we haven't even thought about where it wouldn't be cost prohibitive, where the city doesn't want to run anything like that. But I do like the idea of having that.
Yeah.
That was my question, as well, a little bit more general question of, you know, we talk about a hotel, and then we look at, what is the success of the hotel in Independence? And do we have the market for that? The housing, where we're building more housing and rentals in the area, do we have the appetite for that? Do we have the opportunity for the developers to give us an idea of what they might think would potentially be a little bit more successful, or they might have an appetite to build? Is that part of the process?
We certainly could say, if you don't like, you know, if there's, I guess the way I think about it, so first of all, if we look at, and this is going to go way back, so one way to maybe to approach this, and I do think this is kind of getting at it, is, so the second most popular vision statement here was, be a place for locals and visitors. And, you know, I mean, I think that a roller skating rink or, you know, something else, right, is basically say, that's important for Dallas. We want this to be a place where people who live anywhere in Dallas are going to want to use it, to come here, to be here, to enjoy it, right? And it could be a roller skating rink, or it could be something that we, I don't know, but something that people enjoy and come to. And so maybe, I think the point is to emphasize that, bring us your creative ideas. But also, that's why sometimes we'll include a statement, and maybe that's missing, is maybe we need a statement, just to be clear, is that, you know, that this project should be revenue-neutral or positive for the city of Dallas. In other words, you want their creative ideas, but you may not want their creative ideas that cost the city $10 million, if you see what I'm saying? Yeah. So that's actually a part of the vision that we can then, by kind of telling developers, we're interested in places that attract locals, but also have to be revenue-neutral positive for the city, we force them to use their creativity.
Do you have a best-case scenario of a town the size of Dallas that took a risk on a project like this, and how that flourished, or how that helped that town?
Great question. Great question. Let me, so, yeah, I can think of a number of them.
Can you just give an example?
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. I'm just trying to think of the one that's the most comparable. But I can't think of, I'm struggling to find something that's like really, really similar. But I'll give you two. I've worked on and off for the city, a city called University Place, Washington, it's just south of Tacoma. It's probably 20,000 to 40,000 people. I started working for that city 20 years ago, actually. And they purchased a bunch of old commercial properties. It was more of a suburban place. But since have built Whole Foods, more than 400 housing units, a whole series of plazas where they have their festivals. And it's really become their, it's exciting, alive. They have all their events and festivals there, and I think that's been a wonderful change for them. If you go to our company's website, Forum Placemaking, we've got a case study on a town called Woodenville, Washington, that I worked with. It's actually about 11,000, 12,000 people, did a four-acre redevelopment there that is great as well. So let's see. I think the, I'm excited to see the Eugene Waterfront redeveloping, that's a bigger project. I'm trying to think of, you know, I think the project in Hillsborough is, has been a nice addition to their downtown. I don't think it's...
My writing thing, that building is 100% hotel, no retail anywhere?
The, yes, there's a housing project that is just west of the hotel that has ground floor commercial space.
The hotel building itself doesn't.
It has a restaurant in it.
Well, you'd expect that in a hotel.
Yeah, so it has a restaurant, and it's got some meeting rooms, but it's got no retail space. Yeah, yeah.
For example, you know, another local example, Council Brantos is over in Monmouth, you know, the multi-story structure there that has the ground floor retails, there's a couple of restaurants in there, and then they have the residential on the upper, I think that it's a four-story building, about three floors. You know, so that's just an example right down the road. Both Independence and Monmouth use, you know, urban renewal within their districts to help support those projects, you know, with some, with different incentives to make those happen. So, you know, there are examples all across Oregon, you know, cities larger or smaller than us, that have gone through a similar process of, you know, finding a property that was underutilized, you know, securing that property, working through a development process to see, you know, a public-private partnership. I think of Cambie, which is very similar to the city of Dallas in terms of population and size. They've done a number of urban renewal, public-private partnerships for, you know, ground floor retail, you know, upper story, you know, multifamily residential mostly in their downtown, but they've done a lot of work up there as well. but they've done a lot of work up there as well.
If I could, thank you for bringing up Cambie, great example. The, there's two projects that are, that are very similar in some ways. There's the Dahlia, which is a mixed-use housing over commercial space on city, formerly city-owned property. And then they sold the old city library that's become kind of a multi-tenant. It's a brewery, food hall. I think those are great projects. That's, that's a great example. Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions? Do you have any comments, Brian?
So I just want to make sure the consultant's getting away from this meeting what he wants. So with your last few questions, do you want us to kind of answer those now out loud in a discussion? So like the key question number one, you know, should the city move forward with an RFQ? How do y'all feel about that? Do you want us to move forward with this project?
I'd say yes.
Yeah? Okay. Go ahead, Kim.
I wasn't here for the beginning of the meeting and so I'm wondering, what is an RFQ?
So an RFQ is a request for qualifications. So we're essentially asking, you know, developers, "Hey, are you interested in, you know, a redevelopment project, you know, in Dallas, you know, with our vision?" And get kind of their qualifications, you know, their experience, their interest level. And so then, once we have that RFQ process gone through, we've selected kind of our preferred developer, or maybe there's, you know, three or four that we're interested in pursuing, then we would ask them to submit a proposal for what their idea is for their projects and then we could, you know, solidify one of those developers after they do both RFQ and RFP process.
We decided the use that we've...
And I don't think that we would necessarily limit ourselves to what uses would be there when they, you know, when we ask for that qualifications process.
RFQ is kind of like a vetting thing. Do you guys have the team that we would need to do this? Can you show us things you've done in the past that are comparable?
I've got a question that whenever I hear public-private partnership, I get really nervous.
Yeah.
So I just want to verify that the public-private partnership that we're talking about here is the partnership on behalf of Dallas would be to contribute the land at a reduced cost or no cost or a tax incentive or whatever. But long-term, the city's not going to have any ownership in this thing, right?
The goal is for the city to secure the developer, you know, have a development agreement that includes, you know, incentives or not, whatever that agreement is. And then once that agreement's executed and the developer's moving forward, there's a point in that, that process, early on or right after construction takes place, before occupancy, to transfer that ownership to the developer and the city's hands are out of it at that point.
Kind of a foundational thing in urban renewal. You, you want this stuff to end up in private hands to make the maximum contribution of the tax base. That's kind of an urban renewal goal.
I just want to clarify that. I guess, so thank you for, I'm glad that we, I think we've addressed the first question. I'm also interested in, in your thoughts on the fourth question. I understand you have another meeting in a month or something like that where you may discuss these again.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly, you know, discuss particular incentives that the, the city agency may be interested in pursuing, you know, outside of this meeting, in a separate meeting. And so what those incentives are is a future discussion, but I think, you know, a good question for the council before we even, or for the agency before we even have that meeting is, you know, are you even interested in any incentives for the development project? Noting that I think the more incentives that you're able to consider, the more likely you'll have a successful project and developer.
Given the way that I've gone with it, I think we should definitely talk to our incentives because we want to get the odds as much in our favor as we can to make the thing pencil out.
Personally, yes. I mean, we, I think when we bought the building, we knew we were going to be doing a lot with the land. We also knew we were going to be looking at the SDC fees, we're going to be looking at taxes. Personally, the, from what I've heard from fellow citizens and myself, I lean more towards the boutique hotel as far as being able to provide more incentives towards that. It is better for the downtown, it's better for the revitalization of the downtown. When you bring in customers with, that are paying that, they can revitalize the downtown just by going to the hotel, going to the movie theater, going to, if Latitudes opens up again, they have money to spend, which then in turn grows the downtown. So I can see a lot more incentives being pushed that way and getting that gap narrower on, on that type of a project.
Shane, yeah, I certainly agree that, that the hotel would be the preferred way I'd like to go. I'm not going to reject the housing idea out of hand because there's an old cliche in redevelopment that says, "Second-story housing is part of what keeps your downtown alive after five o'clock." So there's some value there and based on a lot of the numbers we just saw, it might be easier to make it pencil out that way, but I would prefer to go that direction if we possibly can, for all the reasons you gave.
I think the big part of my issue with housing downtown is we're on schedule with at least 700 apartment units in the next five years, and the rent at that building would be way too high for it to be reasonable.
Because of location, yeah, you're probably right.
Yeah, yeah. This is not downtown Salem where somebody, you know, works for a government building or whatever. We do have some people that pay high rent and really a lot of rent is way too high. But these would be like boutique hotel rent prices. So I would much rather see a hotel or even the long-term rentals, like I was talking about, the traveling professionals, they can afford to pay that. But the average family, especially with our population, that are between, you know, 20 and 30, which I kind of figure that's like the typical renting age.
Those would be expensive apartments.
They're not going to hop on in, even with roommates, to something that's that expensive.
Yeah, so I think, I think that kind of, you know, answers your second question there, right? You know, I think that preferred option is 1A, which is the boutique hotel, but, I mean, other options are acceptable for us to consider, unless there's objections from other counselors. I think the answer to number two is also yes.
A feeling that, well, whatever we ultimately settle with is going to be what looks to pencil out the best, whatever that turns out to be.
And if we get three or four RFQs and they all stink, we can go back to the drawing board. I mean, I'm not going to pick something that, you know, is going to be terrible, but I think considering options for incentives is absolutely what has to be done.
And I agree. I mean, I don't think we want to settle with this.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. I mean, we're in this for the long term, we want to get it right. So if it takes longer, it takes longer, but we want to end up with the right solution because we're only going to get one shot at this.
Michael, two questions. You, in one of the proposals that showed the housing in the middle, on the second floor, no, second floor, the hotel on the second floor and the housing in the top two floors, is that a typical ratio or do you put the hotel on the top and the housing in the, down below?
So that was actually, that really was raised by Polk CDC. And, you know, I've been reaching out and talking to various potential developers of the site, they're one, and they, they brought that up. They said, "Well, we might, we might be interested in doing ground-floor commercial, hotel on the second floor, and housing above that." So is it typical? No. Usually, I mean, what I see, it could be flipped, but what I see more is just, is it's, the upper floors are all one use. I mean, right, you're trying to, it's just complicated to have multiple different uses in a building.
And extending the commercial up to the second floor and going, but not splitting it into three different sections.
I really just showed that because it was brought up by, you know, yeah, somebody else.
The view from the third, fourth, fifth floors would be incredible.
That's a great point, yeah.
And so that goes into definitely on the third question, you'd want to, during the RFQ process, you'd want to be handing out what our visions are because if they're not on board already with a little bit of interest or a little bit of guidance?
Exactly.
So I think that answers all four questions, right?
Well, I think to your question, I, I think I got what I wanted. You guys have been clear.
Excellent, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Questions? We'll adjourn until seven.